You guys.
Colleagues. Now we entered a session for food and environmental hygiene. I'll invite Mr. Chen Tianwen, the Secretary for Environment and Ecology, and his team to come inside the conference room. We will talk about the one for environmental branch. In the next session, we are talking only about the food branch for this session. Members, please press the request to speak button if you wish to ask questions. Secretary, please brief members on your speech.
Thank you, Chair. The Environment and Ecology Bureau is committed to ensuring food safety and environmental hygiene and promoting the sustainable development of the local agriculture fisheries industries. Under the government program on tackling hygiene black spots, the FEHD has conducted twenty thousand special cleanings cleansing operations in two thousand twenty three at about two hundred hygiene black spots. At present, more than ninety percent of the hygiene black spots have been removed. The department will continue to monitor and remove hygiene black spots to meet the target set out in the two thousand twenty three policy address, which is to remove sixty percent of the remaining environmental hygiene black spots identified by end two thousand twenty four compared to end two thousand twenty three. In order to further consolidate the results achieved and enhance the efficiency, we have conducted a comprehensive review on the existing statutory powers and penalties of environmental hygiene-related legislation. The first stage review focused on raising the fixed penalty levels. The new penalty levels took effect in October two thousand twenty three. We have completed the second stage review and have proposed legislative amendments to tackle various problems. We briefed the panel on food safety and environmental hygiene on the outcome of the public consultation and the legislative amendment proposals in March this year. We target to submit the relevant amendment bill by Q four of this year at the earliest. As for the problem of rodent infestation, the Department FEHD will continue to implement a series of more targeted rodent prevention and control measures, making use of anti-rodent technologies and tools, strengthening the effectiveness of overnight rodent operations, and formulating more effective anti-rodent strategies. In two thousand twenty three, the department captured about sixty-three thousand live rodents, an increase of about forty percent compared to two thousand twenty-two, and removed seventy priority rodent black spots, about sixty percent over the territory. The government will continue to aim to achieve the target of removing sixty percent of the remaining and newly identified rodent black spots by end two thousand twenty-four as set out in the two thousand twenty-three policy address. As regards food business license, the department is progressively rolling out a number of enhancement measures, issuing E licenses for food business applications, for example, and publishing a DIY application for food business licenses to facilitate business operation. We are actively taking forward several new public market projects. The new market in Tianshui Way will be completed first by the second half of two thousand twenty-seven. The market in joint user complex in area sixty-seven of Trunkuen Ho has received endorsement of the Public Works Committee Subcommittee of the Leshco. Subject to the Finance Committee's funding approval, the works will commence as soon as possible and completed in around four point five years. The overhaul Liwan Market officially reopened in March two thousand twenty-four. We will continue to maintain close communication with stakeholders to and implement other MMP market modernization program projects. The government has all along attached great importance to the local agriculture and fisheries industries and support the sector in terms of application of advanced technology, intensification of production, and seizing the opportunities arising from the development in the GBA. In December of last year, we published the blueprint for the Sustainable Development of Agriculture and Fisheries and have reported the measures in the blueprint to the relevant panel in the council. On the fisheries front, the four new fish culture zones with a total sea area of about five hundred ninety hectares will commence operation in phases starting from this year to lower the startup cost for fishermen. The government plans to set up five units of modern deep-sea cages in phases for rental to fisheries associations or organizations to lower their startup costs. Local mariculture production is expected to increase by one hundred percent by two thousand twenty-seven compared to two thousand twenty-two. So that is double the amount before. On the agriculture front, we will facilitate the establishment of a modernized techno agricultural park of about eleven hectares within part of Agri Park Phase Two, and it will start its operations in phase since starting from the end of two thousand twenty-four. We will also have a pilot project on modernized urban farming in Maon Shan Sai Sha Road Garden, starting commencing its commencing its operations in the second half of two thousand twenty-four this year. To promote the development of leisure farming, we will facilitate farms engaged in commercial agricultural production to offer produce cooked by simple methods by setting more lenient license terms in the first half of this year. Thank you. My colleagues and I are happy to answer questions from members. We have ninety-odd minutes till the end of meeting. I believe if everyone complies with the time limit assigned, every one of the twenty-odd members can ask questions. We have Mr. Tang Kapiu, Mr. Adrian Ho, Mr. Siu Ka Ho, Dr. Johnny M, Mr. Lam Chan Sing, Mr. Benson Lu, Mr. Ring Kong, Mr. Duncan Chu, Mr. Tony Ch, Mr. Chen Su Hong, Dr. Chow Man Kong, Mr. Yang Wing Kit, Mr. Le Man Kwan, Mr. Robert Lee, Ms. Chen Hoi Yan, Mr. V Chan, and other members who will be able to ask questions. Thank you. Mr. Tang Kapiu. I have some questions about rodent control. I first would like to praise the efforts of the administration. In two thousand twenty-one, they have caught thirty-three thousand odd live rodents. And after that, you have caught thirty-sixty-odd thousand live rodents. The increase is over eighty-seven percent. I need to mention Kaolin East in particular for Kun Tong and Wong Tai Seen and Wong Tai Seen first. In two thousand twenty-one, the rodents caught thirty-three thousand five hundred. Two years later, it was a significant increase of eighty-six thousand. So it is a significant increase in the number of live rodents and dead rodents caught. In Kun Tong, it's different. In two thousand twenty-one, six thousand two hundred odd rodents, live rodents, were caught. In two thousand twenty-three, it's five thousand five hundred and seventy rodents that were caught. So in Kun Tong, life or dead rodents found were less than before. Does that mean our measures were not as effective? Or is it because there are less rodents? But there are still a significant amount of rodents in Wong Tai Seen. I want to ask what is the administration's view on this? Second, on policy issues. Often, we see people saying that restaurants are closing. We have twenty thousand odd restaurants in two thousand twenty-one, and there is a minor increase in thirteen thousand odd restaurants in two thousand twenty-three. So there is an increase in the number of restaurants. The administration should really dispel rumors to ensure reputation. We have five hundred odd bakeries now, and before there were a lot more. So that is the case with bakeries. That's the decrease for that. But for others, we actually have an increase. Thank you. Secretary. Thank you. On rodents caught. Rodent issues are actually very close to the hearts of people. So what do the figures represent? Is it because we have less reds? Or is it because the measures are not effective? It's hard to glean the fact from the figures. So we have been conducting scientific analyses. We've also implemented electronic monitoring. I'll let my colleague talk about the measures we have implemented to conduct detailed analyses on the rodent situation in different districts. We will focus our work on the districts where there are more rodents. For restaurants. There are indeed some restaurants that are closing, but we actually see more new restaurants opening. I'll again let my colleague talk about the details. Thank you. Director. How many live rodents and dead rodents are found are just objective figures. As the secretary said, we should focus on how we are conducting our surveys, and we will target the rodent infestation black spots and implement measures. In this year, we will make use of thermal imaging technology and AI to conduct rodent activity surveys so as to identify the rodent infestation black spots and take targeted measures. And the new index, Rodent Free Index, we have it in Mong Kok, Shengshou Po and another district. We will soon announce the findings for the other districts. My answer will end here for now. Thank you, Mr. Adrian Ho. Thank you, Chair. I want to ask about reply number zero-one-four on fets. It is a question of Chen, Mr. Chen Hak Ken. On the regulation of fets in Hong Kong, I, from my observations, think the standard of fets in Hong Kong are very low and there is not much regulation. The administration has provided in their replies some figures, but they did not talk about the number of cases in which there was medical negligence and how many cases in which the animals lost their lives. So I want the administration to talk about the figures for the cases in which these incidents occurred. And for certain cases, fets who have had serious breaches only had their names removed from the register for three to six months. I don't consider this to be a harsh punishment. Does the administration consider that there should be an increase in penalties and consider refugation of licenses for fets in order to raise the standards for fets in Hong Kong? I'm saying this because some of my friends from overseas, they are professionals. They want to come to Hong Kong. They will consider various factors. They will consider the business factors, but they will also consider the situation for their pets in Hong Kong. And I have to be honest with them. The standard of fets is actually very low in Hong Kong, so I hope the administration can follow up on this problem. Thank you. I'll let the Director for Agriculture and Fisheries and Conservation answer that question. Thank you. On the regulation of fets. Fets have to be registered under the veterinary surgeon's ordinance. And there are some professional competencies regulation in the ordinance. Should there be complaints, the veterinary surgeons' board will conduct an inquiry, and the board members will look into the complaints and the circumstances of the cases. Upon the inquiry, they will have a finding published. If the vet is found in breach of the regulations, punishment will be handed out. But Mr. Adrian Ho was asking whether there would be a review of penalties because the most serious penalty handed out was a removal of the name from register for three to six months only. Thank you. I understand that there is not a maximum penalty imposed at the moment by the VSB. Depending on the seriousness of the breach, the fed will be handed out a punishment that is appropriate. Mr. Adrian Ho, any follow-up? No, thank you. Mr. Siu Ka Fei.
Thank you. I want to ask about one-one-six. It's about enhancement of street cleansing services and collection of refuse surfaces. I want to ask about the establishment and outsourced cleansing workers engaged. The reply provided that the FEHD has no breakdown of the relevant figures. And next one to ask about one-one-seven. Some breaches identified in public markets. Again, I asked about the manpower and expenditure involved, and the department said again that they did not keep a breakdown of figures. I want to ask why. I then want to ask about one-one-eight. On short-term extension, the penalties have been increased. So I want to ask how many people have been prosecuted. You said that the figures, the period involved would be from October to January of this year, October of last year to January of this year. So in the same period from two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three, there are four thousand one hundred and seventy-seven fixed penalty notices issued. And in the same period this year, you have three hundred and fifty-three cases. That is a significant decrease from the same period last year. And number of prosecutions for last year, it's one thousand nine hundred and nine. And in two thousand twenty-three to twenty-four, the same period, it's four hundred eighty-one. So why is it that there is a significant decrease in the number of FPNs issued while there is a decrease also in the number of prosecutions initiated? I will let the Director of Food and Environmental Hygiene answer that question. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. The member asked why we couldn't provide breakdown on manpower and expenditure in clearing environmental hygiene black spots. There's a question, one reply, one-one-one, one-one-six and one-one-seven. Well, actually, this is actually part of the day-to-day work of our colleagues, so that's why it's hard for us to provide a breakdown on such figures. That's the reason. As for shopfront extension, illegal shopfront extension, we are taking a targeted approach to curb such extension. So in terms of the number of warnings and fixed penalty notices issued, there's a significant drop. That's because we have conducted a series of joint operations, and we see already there's been substantial improvement in illegal shopfront extension. So that's why there's a drop in the number of fixed penalty notices and prosecutions. Even in terms of number of complaints, there's a drop too compared to the early two thousand twenty-three and early end twenty-three, that's a drop of some forty percent of complaints. That's why there's also a drop in the number of fixed penalty notices that reflects a drop in complaints received. Now, starting from the twelfth of December two thousand twenty-three, we raised the fine for fixed penalty. Now, it's been increased from fifteen hundred dollars to six thousand dollars. That's why that serves a strong deterrent effect. My question was, why is it for the fixed penalty notices, FPN, that's dropped to just eight point five percent as for prosecution? It's dropped to twenty-five percent of the previous year. Why is that the case? Now, for fixed penalty notices and prosecutions, we will decide on the actual circumstances in deciding which route to take. It depends on the offense and whether the act itself is well-defined so we could immediately issue fixed penalty notices. So it depends on the different circumstances and the actual acts of the individuals before we decide on the enforcement action to take. Mr. Steven Ho. Oh-two, oh-two-one, oh-two-two, oh-two-three, they're all about the supply and total value. We're talking about figures for the past three years. From two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-three, it's dropped from thirty-one point seven billion dollars to twenty-plus billion dollars as a total value. Why is that the case? Is it because food costs has come down or there's less food imported? Now, for oh-two, oh, it's about eggs. Now, it's dropped from sixty-seven tons to about sixty-one thousand tons, a drop of ten percent. Vegetable supply, twenty-three thousand eight hundred tons, and it's dropped to twenty-one thousand seven hundred tons. And the past two years, it's remained at about twenty-one thousand tons. For local production, it remains at about four million tons. It's not changed. So in terms of value, it's dropped quite a bit. It's dropped by about fifty percent compared to the drop in volume of ten percent. So what's your observation? And then when I visit the local districts, especially NTWIS, I see that public markets have seen their business drop because people are now going to the mainland, to Shenzhen, to buy their food and groceries. And so, and we know that in the boundary, cross-boundary point, some people are bringing in prohibited items such as eggs or raw meat. Maybe they have blanched the meat and they think that will be fine, but it's not. And I see as every year, some fifty or sixty, there are some fifty or sixty cases of illegal import of orchids. So we are seeing increasing movement across the boundary. So in terms of the impact on prices of local food and in terms of the public awareness of the legal requirement, what is your assessment? And then environmental hygiene, there are over six hundred black spots now. There's gone up to over seven hundred. The government has addressed many of the black spots in some districts. You've actually removed all the black spots. What are the standards, what are the criteria? What do you mean by removing the black spots? And then in seven other black spots, there's been no improvement. So what's your observation? And most importantly, for your recurrent expenditure on environmental hygiene, now you have achieved so much. Are you going to keep the expenditure level? Or maybe you will reduce the expenditure because of the tight budget? But still, that won't affect your work on environmental hygiene black spots. So what is your strategy? And I think in the past year, months or so, the government stopped funding from us on improving the rodent control technology. I think that should be counted separately. Don't include that in your recurrent expenditure. Who will take the question? Director of Agriculture, Fisheries and Conservation? Yes, the AFCD will answer the questions on food import, and then the FHD will talk about environmental hygiene black spots. Mr. Lung First, Dr. Lung First, then. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On Mr. Steven Ho's observation, on food-bred products, there are two channels. That is, they may come through the government-managed wholesale marketing organizations, or they could go through wholesalers and not the government. For eggs, for instance, the volume remains at about six thousand tons or so. This year, there may be a slight drop that probably reflects the market demand. And so vegetable and live chickens, vegetable, we see the supply is more or less stable, but there's some minor fluctuation in prices. For live chickens from mainland, actually, there are no longer live chickens coming from mainland. I'm talking about local live chickens. On average, each day, there are about eleven thousand live chickens supplied to the market. The wholesale price is about twenty to thirty dollars per catty. So for local live chicken supply, we see that it's rather stable. About bringing food across the boundary, you know, publicity on compliance with the law. Perhaps Dr. Wong can tell you what we're doing together with the Customs and Exiles. Dr. Wong, please turn on Dr. Wong's microphone. Dr. Wong, please. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Ho, for your question. Now, we take very seriously enforcement on illegal import of food. We have taken over one thousand one hundred and seventeen prosecutions last year compared to two thousand twenty-two. There's a four-fold increase. In two thousand twenty, there were about one hundred and ninety-five prosecutions. So at cross-boundary points, we try to step up our publicity. We also work with other departments on joint operations. Hopefully, through publicity and prosecutions, we are able to regulate the import of food effectively. For the last question, Mr. Ho, well, you've run out of time. Other members could pick up on that if they wish. Next, Dr. Johnny. Oh-three-seven, reply oh-three-seven. Import and export of pets. Now, for pets imported from mainland, there's a need for at least hundred-and-twenty days of quarantine, and there are not many quarantine places, twenty dogs and twenty cats, as far as I understand. So for animal lovers, they find this measure inconvenient. The department is saying that it's reviewing various measures on rabies prevention so that we could shorten the quarantine period for imported dogs and cats. So to implement these measures, how much is the cost? And how much manpower is required? And what is your progress? Do you have a timetable? We've heard from the public that they would like to take their pets to mainland for travel, but it's so difficult. So would you consider the use of new technology so that you could have new testing method? And then the public will be able to bring their pets along as they travel to the mainland? So it's about northbound travel of pets. Maybe Dr. Mr. Young could answer your second question writing, Mr. Or Dr. Lung, rather. Dr. Lung can talk about the importation of pets. Dr. Lung.
On entry and exit of pets, it's mostly about dogs and cats because there's the risk of rabies, of rabies. And so for pets imported from different places, we classify them into three groups. So the group one and group two, the risk is relatively low, so there's no need for quarantine. There's only need for relevant health certificates. For group three, the risk is high. That's why for dogs and cats imported from these places, they need to be quarantined for four months. But with advancing technology and veterinary science as well as testing methods, so we have started a study to review the quarantine period. As the member pointed out, if a pet has been, has had rabies vaccination, and then if the test shows that the reference standards are met, also there is the production of the reference certificate, then we could substantially reduce the quarantine period from four months. We are now at the end of our review for the new arrangement. We will talk to the reference bodies and see if our suggestion is acceptable to them. So we hope to implement a new arrangement as soon as possible.
And actually, the cost for quarantine will also be substantially reduced for the importation of dogs and cats. Next, Mr. Lam Chan Sing. Thank you.
Oh, EEB oh-nine-two is my own question. That's establishment on off-street refuse collection park. I don't know if they are government staff or outsourced staff. In any case. And LCPs may handle different volume of refuse. Some for one thousand tons, they're just three persons. And then for three hundred tons, they're still, they are still three staff members. And then in some cases, for three hundred tons, that's just one person. So would you review the workload in different LCPs and then redeploy your staff? Because in some LCPs,
Because in some LCPs, staff are probably overworked. Now, second question, for the rural RCPs, there's no water supply. It may take a walk of ten minutes to get to the water source, supply source. And the water supply is not steady. Now, the FHD will arrange water supply facilities for village-type RCPs based on actual needs. So would you set KPI? So therefore, a specific number of village-type RCPs, you'll be able to install water supply facilities within a certain period. Now, perhaps the cleaning workers on unions have um put forward the request on the facilities needed in RCP. So you are gradually adding these facilities. And it's mentioned that there may be repurposing from off-street RCPs. Then there may be many new RCPs to say in the northern metropolis. So will you um upgrade the standards of facilities in RCPs? And then for all new RCPs, they will build according to the new standards. And these facilities will make it easier for the work of cleaning workers and also for them to take rest in between shifts.
Secretary, we are very concerned about the welfare of cleansing workers. We will definitely look into having new standards to provide a better working environment for cleansing workers. For the details, I'll let the director give them. Thank you. Thank you. I will talk about how we will improve our refuse collection facilities. We have a reparation program from twenty twenty to twenty one. We have been working with the R S D. We have completed works for seventeen off-street RCPs. In twenty twenty four to twenty five, we will commence the works for twelve other refuse collection points. We will improve the walls, the ceiling, et cetera. Also, the member mentioned provision of a better working environment for cleansing workers. We have reviewed last year the facilities to be provided for cleansing workers. There are toilets, drinking water, where they can wash their tools and where they can take a rest. We will make sure every refuse collection point will have these four main core elements. Some RCPs are smaller and they are not roll call points. So they may not have as many facilities as we would want. But we will make sure there are the core elements as I mentioned. And we will have cleansing workers go to off-street RCPs to enjoy the other facilities. Can you talk about whether there will be a review of manpower? You have provided some figures as I could see. Yes, we will. We will continuously review the manpower needed and we will flexibly deploy cleansing workers as needed. Thank you. Mister Benson, look. I want to ask about replies zero zero seven and zero three nine. They are my questions on agriculture and fisheries-related issues. In the reply for zero zero seven, the bureau talked about targets being set in the blueprint. In the next fifteen years, it will increase from fifteen thousand tons to sixty thousand tons for vegetables. It is a significant increase. For fisheries, the production is expected to increase for in particular, mariculture, by twenty twenty seven. A one hundred percent increase from the amount in twenty twenty two. So it would be, from what I could see, a tenfold increase. I appreciate the target set by the administration. But while we are increasing the quantity, we also have to ensure the quality. We also have to ensure there is ancillary support in the marketing and selling channels for these products. Is there any support to be provided to the agriculture and fisheries by the administration to have more selling channels? Will the government help them expand into the mainland market, for example? And in turn, their revenue or income can increase. And on zero three nine, that is another question that was raised by me. It is said that in twenty twenty three, there is a lower target for the production volume of culture fisheries, as well as the target for accredited vegetable farms. The reply given by the administration is that there are a host of factors at play. We have development of agricultural land, that's why there is less agricultural land, and there is also the epidemic. Now, the final target, I when you're setting that target, we have to take into account that there is an increase in production at the moment. We also have to take into account the fact that the industries will and should make use of technologies. So will the administration provide more support in terms of training and promoting the use of technologies? Thank you. Secretary. Thank you, Mister Look. What you said is indeed very important to the agriculture and fisheries. I'll let the director uh of Agriculture, Fisheries and Conservation answer the questions. Thank you. In the blueprint for the sustainable development of the agriculture and fisheries, we have set a target for the increase in production. We are working with the industries to expand the selling channels and increase the selling potential. We will do something in terms of processing, packaging and developing more products so that we will have more diversified products to be offered. Apart from having fresh products, we will soon have more processed products. Also, we have to create a brand. We have accredited vegetable farms and fish farms. We can create a brand through these schemes. And citizens are very much aware of the two brands. We will continue to develop new products to tie in with the development of the brand. We will also enhance publicity so that there will be more selling channels for these products and that the products can reach more of the public. And as Mister Benson Luke said, we are indeed looking into how to expand into the mainland market through SEPA. We now have lower duties when we sell our products to the mainland. As for the use of technologies and training to be provided to the trade, we have all along been working in these regards. As for technologies, we have been using hydroponics for farming. We have also used greenhouses for fisheries. We are going to make use of deep-sea cages as well as smart operations. We are teaching these technologies to the trades. We are also introducing some technologies that were not used in Hong Kong. In Tonglongchau, we actually already have a demonstration zone for deep-sea cages. In Changsha One, we also have a hydroponics research center. We have all along been inviting trade members to come to the centers for a visit and have provided courses for them. Thank you. Next, Mister Dong Kong.
Thank you. My first question is on zero five oh and zero five four about the Joint Office for the Investigation of Water Sipage. The F H D and the Building Department set up the Joint Office and they have hired three hundred and fifty-four officers. They have spent over three hundred million dollars to, for their work. They have investigated forty-five thousand odd cases, but only six thousand cases in which nuisance orders were issued. So my first question is, why is it that there is such a low ratio for the nuisance orders to be issued? And I want to ask, because you're investigate, you have investigated forty-five thousand cases and for each case you would spend six thousand dollars. That's quite costly. Why is it the case? I also want to ask about oh six three. I, the figure scared me because we spent one billion dollars in the management of markets. But the department, it said in the reply, has no breakdown on the figure for the management of markets. That really scares me because with such a daunting figure, there is no breakdown. And if you're talking about that there are over ninety percent of the let-out stores and we are having less stores that are let out. Why is it the case? Is it because there is poor management? Let me look at the time. I also want to ask about zero seven zero. The application dealt with for outdoor seating, the median figure is, it will take three months to process. And that will mean that there are more cases in which three months or longer will be needed. And for the ninety-eight applications, many of them were withdrawn. Is it because of the long processing time? Why is it that they take twenty-three months, uh not three months, to process these cases? Thank you.
Secretary, thank you. With the ratio of nuisance orders issued and the management of markets and on the applications for outdoor sitting. I'll let the director of Food, Environmental Hygiene answer the questions. Thank you. On the cases for water sipage, there are indeed quite a number of complaints. But we had to screen out the cases in which investigation is suitable. Because these investigations are criminal in nature. We have to identify whether there was indeed nuisance. So we will screen out the cases in which investigation is not needed. For example, when the moisture content is lower than thirty-five percent and when the sipage comes from the property of the owner, we will not take forward the investigation. Also, the threshold is proving beyond reasonable doubt the sipage comes from a certain property. And then we'll issue a nuisance notice to the owner of the property. It is only when we get to that stage that we can issue a nuisance order. And at, for certain investigations, they will be ended or terminated when we find uh these other causes that would warrant investigation to not go forward. They also, uh she also asked about why the investigations are so costly. Oh, it is because some of them would require some traditional tests, such as color-water tests. And there are multiple stages to the investigation. C two would have the color-water tests and other tests performed. And for stage three, we would have a professional investigation stage. We will make use of professional equipment in this stage. So we will need much manpower as well as equipment to conduct the stage three investigations. That's why it will be more costly. As for markets, can you give a brief response? And outdoor seating, I think you can provide a written reply to that. Thank you. On the management of markets, there are multiple factors at play. Apart from regulating the daily operations of markets and the cleanliness of markets, we also have to deal with tendency matters. Indeed, we do not have a breakdown for the figures for the management of markets. Okay, as for the issue of outdoor seating, please provide a written reply. Mister Duncan Chu, I want to ask about zero zero three. A question of mine on warden farming. There's the agriculture rural park. And figures were not provided on how many companies are to be recruited. It is only said that an agricultural organization will be engaged to to run the modernized techno-agricultural park. Right now, we do not have a lot of tech companies operating such operations in Hong Kong. And will there be some sort of demonstrations for local companies? I don't think there are that many of tech companies in Hong Kong, however. Have you liaised with overseas companies that are experts in the field so as to promote the operations of the modernized techno-agricultural park? And the agricultural organization will operate on a nonprofit-making basis. Do they have a scientific background? Will they be able to engage tech companies to help run their operations? Or is it just the case that they will provide support in agriculture? I want the administration to elaborate on how the agricultural organization was selected. Secretary.
I'll invite the Director of Agriculture, Fisheries and Conservation to reply to the question. But with the modernized techno-agricultural park MPTP is one of the steps for us to take to promote the um um use of technology in farming. So we'll work first with the local agricultural organizations and then we'll identify suitable technologies for use. The director will give you more details. Director, on the MTP, Modernized Techno-Agricultural Park is actually a public-private partnership arrangement. The landowner and agricultural organization collaborates to develop the farmland into a modern farm using new technology. Well, um it's still, the park is still at the infancy stage. With uh that organization is going to set up a committee. And there'll be members of, with a very, the relevant agricultural background. So together, they work out how to develop the park. Now, there's mention just now of introduction of a modern technology. That's a part of their plan. They are now proceeding with the establishment of the park. Of course, the department is also involved. At the right juncture, we'll see if we should um enlist companies or organizations, say with food technology know-how or other advanced technology know-how so that we could further develop the park. Mister Duncan Chu. Now, I, I didn't quite catch how the agricultural organization will effectively promote the use of technology. Because we're talking about eleven hectares land and they just buy new machinery, maybe it's just for um fish farming. What about some development? Now, uh our universities are doing food technology and agricultural technology research, and they know nothing about this park. So, so how can you enlist their help? Secretary, well, we're still at a very early stage of the plan. Uh we're still stretching out the details. So um what we have in mind is to set up a committee together with the local agricultural organization. And then we invite experts from different sectors to join the committee. And then we'll see uh how we could identify suitable technologies and promote the use of technology. We're not going to leave it to the agricultural organization alone. But as the director explains, this is a pri- a public-private partnership arrangement. The land is privately owned. So the government plays a role, uh will, will provide guidance and steer uh in promoting the use of technology in farming. Next, Mister Tony Che. Thank you.
Uh E E B bracket F oh four eight, oh five oh and oh five four. Oh four eight is about cremation surface. Last year, uh you take out the outlying islands and
Last year, uh you take out the outlying islands and Chao Changchao of the six crematorium, uh the usage rate is some ninety nine percent uh. So do you have plans to provide more crematorium? If so, how long will it take and how much resources will be needed? For Lanta Island and Tongchung. That's um more people moving to these areas or working in these districts. Do you have any plans to uh build a crematorium there? To serve the public there. And oh four I F O and oh five four are about the work of the joint office on investigating water sippage. Now, you set a target of ninety working days for investigating the source of sippage. And the reply says that the uh you have achieved sixty a target of um and outcome uh performance of sixty eight by five percent. And then in reply, uh you're considering shortening the period to sixty day working days. And now you your um success rate is only some sixty odd percent. So can you actually compress the timeframe further? And it seems that each year there are still uh out cases that cannot be uh handled uh within the timeframe. So how, what is the backlog now? Secretary. I'll invite the uh director of food and environmental hygiene to explain further. But then we do have plans uh for uh cremation. We have plans to increase the number of cremato- uh columba- uh crem- crematorium. Also, we are uh trying to adopt a newer um cremation technology. Director, uh first on crematorium, there are six government operated uh crematorium. Wahab Shack, Collinson, Cape Collinson, uh Fo Shan, Changchau and so on. Now, with an aging population, uh we expect there will be an increasing demand for cremation surface. So we expect the number of cremation sessions in twenty twenty three to increase to sixty thousand three hundred. That's an increase of forty percent compared to the year before. For most of the crematorium, the um facilities have been in use for some twenty years. So in the next few years, we're going to suspend the operation of some crematorium so we could replace the facility, the cremation facilities. So in twenty thirty one, there could be a shortage of sessions. But then we plan to build a new crematorium in Wahab Shack. There'll be ten new um cremators with um I A I technology. And then um by twenty thirty one, we'll be able to increase the number of cremation sessions gradually. What about Lantau Island? It's not easy for us to identify suitable sites for crematorium. We have to consider the surrounding environment, uh we have to consider views of nearby residents. So that's why we are now focusing our effort on building new crematorium in Wahab Shack. What about water sippage? Can you give a brief reply? We try to shorten the investigation period, but then an investigation depends on a number of factors. Now, for the uh uh subject of complaint, uh it depends very much if the person is cooperative and they will let our staff in for the investigation. And we have um uh taken two measures to try to improve the arrangement here. First, we uh have amended the law. So if um the primus occupant would not comply with our notice of entry into primus, then that would be a criminal offense. We have actually um put forward the legislative amendments for consideration. And then also, we are trying to combine the stage two and stage three investigation. And then we could reduce the uh number of investigation days from ninety to sixty. We are in the process of a pilot scheme. Next, Mister Chow So Chung. First, uh E E B F oh four seven is your question, Chairman, about the deletion of posts in the F H D. Of course, in the past um uh two years, in terms of rodent control and illegal shopfront extension, the F H G has done a good job. We can all see that. But then I'm very much concerned about the overall manpower level of the F H G. Right now, the establishment is eleven thousand four hundred ninety two posts, but then uh only what ten thousand two hundred or so posts are f- are filled. And there's a vacancies, there are one thousand two hundred plus vacant posts. That's uh if we just look at the number of vacant posts, um F H G has the second highest number of vacant posts in the government. So nine uh staff members are doing the work of ten now in the F H D. The reply says that in twenty twenty four to twenty five, you the department's going to delete another eighty uh worker two, two posts. So I'm worried that we will add to the workload of existing staff. As for worker two, workman two posts, there are just about two thousand six hundred and seven hundred posts, two thousand, two thousand six hundred, two thousand seven hundred posts filled. If you um delete eighty posts, that's uh uh three percent of the total number. And of the ninety eight posts deleted in the F H D, eighty uh uh workman two posts. Why are you deleting so many of the junior posts? So what is your justification for deleting the workman two posts? And how can you ensure the quality of service? That's my first follow-up question. Second one. Uh oh four eight, a question by Miss Dong Kong. It's oh eight four actually. Um it's about um the staffing level for enforcement after implementation of the um municipal solid waste charging scheme. And then you're going to increase the number of enforcement teams from fifty two to fifty four, an increase of twelve persons. So uh what is the basis for your manpower need assessment? An increase of twelve persons only, would that be enough? So it's about um manpower deployment. Uh I'll ask the director to take the question. Director. Now, the member is concerned about um workman two. Now, among the posts deleted, to be deleted in the F H D, this year, it's true, we're going to delete more workman two posts. But you can rest assured, most of these posts are actually no longer necessary. And in the past few years, these posts were not filled. So it's not the case that there is someone in the post and then we delete it. It's not the case. Uh for some, one of the reasons is because some of the work has been outsourced. So there there won't be the issue of not having enough people to do the work. Now, there is a relatively high vac- vacancy rate for workman two because there is some shortage of such manpower in the labor market. We are working hard to recruit workmen two. Then uh when we um recruit workmen two, usually they join us at the more advanced age. Uh for Ju- January twenty twenty four, for instance, several percent of the uh new recruits about the eight uh um uh twenty seven five percent of the workmen two, existing workmen two are over the age of fifty five. So while we recruit new workmen two, uh we are also seeing the retirement of existing workmen two. So we're trying hard to recruit workers. But then uh uh I I must stress again, the posts we delete will not affect our level of service. Um if enforcement teams for uh waste, um um you know, littering and so on. Now, uh before or after the municipal solid waste charging scheme, we will um uh target littering offenses offenses. And the enforcement is not just um take carried out by our enforcement teams. Now, for hawker um control officers, if they see someone littering, they will also issue penalty tickets. That's why we're confident that we have sufficient staff to carry out enforcement.
Doctor Chow Man Kong, thank you, Chair. We do see a lot of people going to the mainland for consumption. But I still see people being confident about our local agriculture and fisheries products. I first want to ask about zero three five, Miss Lillian Quox's question. I want to ask for the Sustainable Agriculture Development Fund and the Sustainable Fisheries Development Fund. How long will it take for the applications to be processed? Before I asked about this, the performance was not satisfactory. Is it better now? And I want to ask about zero three zero, uh question of Mister Stephen Ho. It is said that for the S F D F, it is one hundred and ten in its expenditure and it has one hundred and one officers. Before, the expenditure was higher, there is a five percent decrease. Why is that? From the blueprint for the sustainable development of agriculture and fisheries, it is said that there will be promotion of deep mariculture production and the use of deep sea cages. This is relatively new in Hong Kong. Will you increase the manpower and funding to be provided to put forward these measures? For the S F D F, there are thirty twenty three approved projects. I'm not sure how much would it be for the commitment. I see that some projects have come to an end, but the status of the projects are shown to be ongoing. Why is that? Thank you. Three questions in two areas. I'll let the director of agriculture fisheries and conservation, Mister Doctor Lauren, answer the questions. Thank you. For the Sustainable Agriculture and Fishery Development Funds, in general, applications will take six months to process. If the cases are more complex, it may take longer. Because we may ask the applicants to provide further information to us for our vetting. But we have streamlined procedures in recent years to expedite the processing of the applications for the simpler cases. And they are applying for two million dollars or below. We will process the applications by circulation to expedite the processing. Next. Every year. To promote the sustainable development of fisheries in twenty twenty three, twenty four compared to twenty twenty two to twenty three, the expenditure has seen a decrease as the member said. This is because in twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, we had to disperse the excitation allowance for fishing operations that were prohibited during a certain period in that, in the previous year. That's why there was an increase in the expenditure. And in twenty twenty three, twenty four, we have reached our normal levels because we no longer had to take into account the dispersment for the fund. Well, how about the part about zero three zero? The commitment and where the project's status is. Oh, yes, for the S F D F projects. Some will go on for several years. The commitment will be dispersed in phases every year. Which is why there is a difference in the figures for different years. Thank you. Mister Yang Winket. I want to ask about one two five, one two seven and one two nine. These are questions asked by me. In twenty twenty three, we have thirty thousand odd complaints. And every day it would be about eighty eight complaints, but you only have twenty nine officers dealing with the cases. So I want to ask how much time is needed to process each case? I also want to ask how much time will people have to wait before their cases will be investigated? And I see that the number of nuisance orders issued only account for ten percent of the cases investigated. Is your K P I ten percent also? Or is it the case that it is what it is in reality? Will you consider increasing the rate because there are thirty thousand cases? That is a lot. On rodent control, I do see it being effective because we have caught more live rodents than before. Before, it was just thirty thousand, now we have sixty thousand odd. There are four main approaches adopted for rodent control. I appreciate the different methods used. But you would have different costs for different methods, I assume. We want to achieve cost effectiveness here. We have, for example, for the alcohol rodent trapping device, how much would it take to implement each of the device? And for each of the method, how much would they cost? I also want to follow up on an issue. Right now, we use in many areas red cages and baits such as sweet potatoes. And you see the innovative approaches being effective. Will you consider making obsolete the use of red cages so as to decrease the costs of our operations? Right now, we need eight hundred seventy five million dollars. It is a significant increase that will be a seventeen million dollar increase. We should save costs wherever we can. On shopfront extension, I can see in your reply the department does not have a breakdown of the figures relating to shopfront extension. We have an increase in penalties. I heard from the administration before that the department will not consider conducting more analyses in this regard. But if we do not have data in this regard, we cannot gauge the effectiveness of the penalties. So can you gather such data so as to facilitate policy formulation in future? Thank you, Secretary. You can answer the first two questions and then the question about shopfront extension. You can provide a written response to that. I'll let the director for uh food and environmental hygiene answer the questions. Thank you. To investigate dripping in conditioners, it would usually be during the summers. And it's not the case that the nine teams would deal with all cases across the territory. We also have district colleagues that would deal with dripping air conditioners as needed. It is also said that there is a low ratio for the nuisance orders issued compared to the total number of cases investigated. That is because if during investigation, we find that there is no dripping air conditioners, that will, we will not continue with the investigations. And we also find in certain cases that owners are not aware that their air conditioners are dripping. Once they're aware of the situation, they just deal with it themselves. So we do not have to get to the stage of the issuance of nuisance orders. Can you also talk about for the co- rodent control measures, how cost effective they are? We have analyzed which tool will be more useful in a particular scenario. We need different tools for different settings. Some, in some areas, natural baits are more useful. In some other places, it will be more useful to put in red traps. And we also put in glue traps in public markets. But is it suitable to have glue traps in real lanes? I don't think it is the case because it may hurt other small animals. So we have different tools for different settings. We'll see which tool is the most effective in each setting. But member can rest assured, we will continue to But member can rest assured, we will continue to strengthen rodent control. We will do better in investigation. We will also look into the rodent investigation index. We will formulate better rodent control measures with the conducting of the analyses. Thank you. Mr. Luan Minkong, I want to ask about zero three eight. About Changsha One Temporary Poultry Market. It has remained temporary for fifty odd years. And it is not the most suitable location for such operations. And this zoning is open space in this area. We should let the site go back to its original usage in order to provide adequate open space for residents. I can see from the reply that with the making idle of the site, it will be completed this year. But the problem is, even if you make vacant a certain part of the site, while in other parts, there are still poultry operations, you can't start with the development of the site for its long-term use. Because even if you are to develop the site in the part into an open space with other operations going around, it may not be suitable. And in Shenshuipu, the U R A has been conducting a study there. And I believe there are also some redevelopment operations in the facility to provide more recreational facilities. I think we should expedite the making vacant of the market to facilitate such development. I want to ask about what the future development plans are for the site. You said that a feasibility study is being conducted for the relocation of the operators. Have you identified suitable sites? What is the progress at the moment? If you cannot relocate, well, if you can relocate the market, it will be beneficial even for the operators because the market has been running for fifty odd years. And as I said, the location is not the best for their operations. And we really want this site to be used for its original use. So let please answer my question about the progress. Thank you. On the Changsha One Temporary Market, the long-term use of which will depend on the government's plans. It's not the case that the A F C D can single-handedly decide on what to do. But I'll let the Director answer the questions. Thank you. The Changsha One Temporary Poultry Market will have two lots consolidated. And we have been working with the stakeholders to see what arrangements should be implemented. We do hope to expedite the progress. And we will be able to release one point two hectares of land for the relevant department for other uses. Well, we can say at the moment that we are conducting the study as mentioned by the member. And we will see how we can consolidate the market with other markets in the city. We are conducting the study at the moment, as I said, and that's what I can say for now. Thank you. Well, let me just say that we want to expedite the progress because it has been floating around for many years. Thank you. Well, that much is clear. All right. Next, Mr. Robert Lee. Thank you. Chair.
I want to follow up on zero eight four and zero one three, one zero three, excuse me. With M S W charging that is soon to be implemented, I think we should really start with reduction of waste at source and reduce the amount of waste generated. In actual operation, we need to consider how we can eliminate the barriers faced by members of the public. In zero eight four, it is said that near three new buildings, large-sized waste bins will be put in place. I want to ask what is the progress of implementation at the moment? And how many such bins will you put in place? We really want to facilitate the public in their depositing of waste. In one oh three, to facilitate restaurants in the recycling of food waste, in fifty-eight R C Ps, food waste recycling points have been set up. And in Q two of this year, it will be increased to one hundred. Are the food waste recycling points only usable by restaurant operators? Or is it the case that it will be made open to the public? Thank you.
Secretary. I'll invite the, um, Ms. Young to speak further on this. Now, but for free new buildings, we're not just talking about preparing for the waste charging, but rather we want to facilitate the disposal of waste by occupants of free new buildings. As for the provision of food waste recycling bins at R C Ps again is to offer more convenience to the public. Ms. Young, please. Thank you.
On refuse collection at free new buildings. Now, where there's a need near free new buildings, we will provide large-sized waste containers. Nothing new. Because, say, during the pandemic, there's a substantial increase in waste. So as a temporary measure already, we started providing large-sized waste containers near free new buildings where there's a need. And also, because we expect the demand to increase, so we are considering how many more waste containers to deploy and at what locations. Now, for some free new buildings, they may not have a management company or an owner's corporation. Some of them do hire cleaning workers so to take refuse to the R C P, which is conveniently located. If that's the case, then there's no need to provide the large-sized waste containers on site, on street. As for the recycling of food waste, we're working closely with the Environmental Protection Department. At refuse collection points, R C Ps, we are going to provide food waste recycling bins. So we're going to increase the number of such bins. And then, uh, uh, food waste recycling points. And then we're also planning to deploy mobile vehicles to collect food waste from restaurants. And we already have a scheme to set up refuse collection containers on rail lanes. So when, while the restaurants wait for cleaning workers to collect the refuse, they could put it in the containers in sealed banks. Now, I asked whether the food waste recycling points at R C Ps are only for restaurants or can everyone use it? The question is yes, everyone can use the food waste recycling points. So residents can also use these facilities at R C Ps. Okay, you've run out of time. Next, Ms. Rebecca Chen. Thank you. Questions on two S X one is on rodent control, oh, five, one, oh, five, three, my questions. And then market management, oh, five, nine, oh, six, one, first about rodent. Just now, we told that the government is using various means to catch rodents. But then from the reply, I see that in terms of the number of live rats caught, there's a substantial increase of forty percent compared to the year before. It's increased from some forty-five thousand life rats to about sixty-three thousand life rats. But as for the number of dead rats, there's also an increase, but then it's not so significant. Is there any reason for that? Now, for live rats, that means you're using the conventional red cage. But then there's criticism about that. Why is it that the catching of life rats is so much, so many more life rats are caught than that rats? And then there are black spots, I'm sure, for rodents infestation. I can see that in twenty twenty-three, you worked very hard and you were able to remove seventy-three rodent black spots. But then still, there are other black spots, at least thirty-eight. Now, I know Shenshuipu and Yaochimong well. I see that for most of these black spots, they are actually in rail lanes. So is it really that difficult to tackle the rodent infestation problem? It's not just the rodent control section. Your other, your other cleaning teams should try to clean the areas. So as long as there's no source of refuse, then there will be no rodents. So why is it that it's so difficult to remove the rodent black spots? And on market management, I must commend you for effort. For the Mayfu Market, you exceeded your target. You minimized the nuisance cost because the disturbance cost or the disruption cost, you had to close the market, but then you were able to open it again before the Chinese New Year. So I must commend you for that. What about the let-out rate of stores? For example, Paul and Row Market is very popular and you've done some minor refurbished works. But still, the occupancy rate is eighty-one percent. And in other temporary markets, at Tongchao Street, the rate is a little slower, sixty percent. So if you're trying to find out why there are stores left vacant, because in some of the markets, almost all stores are let out even at the less desirable location. So what can you do about these markets with low occupancy rate? How can you boost the rate? Two questions. About rodent control market management, Ms. Young will take the questions. Thank you. Yes, on rodent control, Ms. Chen observed that there's a substantial increase in the number of live rats caught compared to the number of dead rats. Well, I believe that's probably because in terms of our policy, we are focusing more on our nighttime road, rodent control operations. And also, we are using more glue traps, for instance, and that's why we are catching more live rats. As for rodent problem in rail lanes, yes, this is also our primary concern. As Ms. Chen pointed out, in rail lanes, it's not just about rodents. Maybe that's, um, um, waste left there. And if it's not handled properly, of course, it will lead to rodent problem. So rail lanes are always our environmental hygiene black spots that we target. So we keep publicizing to the public, we want to stop the rodent problem. And in terms of our food supply and so on, we need to tackle that so we could make it less difficult for rats to survive. On market let-out rate, well, that's affected by various factors. The situation is different for each market. We've done much in the past to boost the let-out rate, occupancy rate of market stores. For example, if there's persistently high vacancy rate, we will, um, um, set the bidding price at sixty percent discount and so, or thirty percent discount and so on. We also do promotion to boost business in these markets too. Now, we find that where there's a low occupancy rate is possibly because there is some more competition nearby. That's why these markets are less popular. Now, in certain locations where public markets are no longer needed, then we will close some of the markets and free up the land for other public facilities. Thank you. I need to manage the remaining time we have. There are three more members, and so I'll draw the line at Ms. Carmen Ken because we're going by, we need to go by the scheduled time of the session. Next, Ms. Jovi Chen, oh, six, nine. Now, we see that the testing of food samples, milk sample, that one more samples are tested. But then for frozen confectionery, you are taking fewer samples for surveillance. Why is that? Last year, I asked a question about the contaminated water. The Japanese authority conducted radiological tests on some confectionery and then tested positive. So even confectionery could be a high risk. It's not just aquatic products or crops. And then there should be prohibition on shizuka as well. Now, from the tenth to the nineteenth of March, you collected some thirty-four samples. But then there's no breakdown of samples. So we can see the test result for candies and confectionery. So can you give us more information? As for the overall expenditure, there's an increase of eight percent. In the past three years, we've been seeing increase in expenditure. Twenty twenty-three to twenty-four, for N C S C staff, there are eight new recruits. I think it's a waste of tax-based money to do such screening. And on the mainland, they just impose a total ban. It will save public money on testing. It also ensures food safety. So the mainland and Macau are more stringent than we are. Last month, there's another new incident with the government's justice policy. Secretary. Now, we have banned aquatic products from ten prefectures in Japan. And so far, we find that our strategy is working well. So we'll closely monitor the situation in Japan. And we'll keep reviewing our policies if necessary. We may tighten our policies. For now, we find that our policies will be appropriate. And Dr. Wong from the Center for Safety will take your other questions.
Thank you. On frozen confectionery, why are we taking fewer samples? Because the approach is risk-based. It depends on the import quantity. If the import quantity is low, of course, then we'll be taking fewer samples for testing. But then, as we adopt a risk-based approach, now Japan is dumping contaminated water into the sea. So for aquatic products, including sea salt and seaweed, these are all considered high-risk products. So we will therefore do testing on all batches of such items imported. As for other food items, we will adopt a risk-based approach in doing random sampling. For Korea, the, uh, the test result is one back row. And then for the reference, international standards, one thousand back row. So we'll review the data we've collected. For confectionery, we find that all the tests results are acceptable. Next, Mr. Chen Hengpan. Oh, five, oh. That's my question. The work of the Joint Office on Water Seapage. Dripping air conditioners and water seapage are a real nuisance to the public. We see that the Joint Offices for Investigation of Water Seapage Complaints have over three hundred and fifty staff members. So for each district, that means there are several dozen staff members. And we're not even counting our source staffs. So there should be many more staff members. But then the public often, residents often tell us that, well, I've approached the Joint Officers. They come and do all this tests, and still they couldn't identify the source of the seapage. And then it takes some three months to do the investigation. And then the case is referred to another department for further investigation. So it often takes a year or so to, on each case, and still they couldn't identify the source of seapage. So in the report, we told that there'll be enhanced
So in the report, we told that there'll be uh enhanced communication in four joint offices uh uh for districts. There will be joint effort with the F H D and for stages two and three investigation, they will be combined. Now, from September to now, it's having a year already. Have you um uh managed to boost your efficiency? That's my first question. Second question. Now, uh many of the cases are referred by you to experts. So apart from doing the colored water test. And different devices is used to um locate the source of um seepage. Is working quite well, but it's only done in four districts. So are you going to extend the approach to other districts? By you by engaging experts and using devices so you could boost efficiency of handling seepage cases as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Two questions. Secretary, please. I'll let the Director of Food and Environmental Hygiene answer the questions. Thank you. For the work of the Joint Office, we have implemented the improved procedures in four districts. This is because we are right now taking rather long to process the investigations. The stage two. Investigation will be conducted simultaneously with stage three investigations. It piloted in September of last year. We do not have a comprehensive set of data just yet as a result. We believe we will be able to make more comprehensive analyses this year. But we believe it will shorten the time needed for investigations. On the use of innovative technologies in stage three for the more complex cases. That is, we cannot identify the source of the seepage. We have made use of infrared. Thermography and microwave thermography to identify the source. But there are limitations to these two methods. We are right now implementing them in certain districts, but it does not mean that for the remaining districts. We will not use them at all. We will still use them for more the more complex cases if necessary. We will extend this methods into other cases in other districts. I think there is a need to do that because we are taking too long to investigate the cases. And right now with the investigation findings, most people aren't satisfied with that. And the cases may be terminated simply because an owner cannot be identified or contacted. Is unsatisfactory. Thank you. I think that's clear. Last one to speak, Miss Carmen Khan. Thank you. I want to follow up on zero eight two, a question asked by me. It is a question on the management of the work of F V H D. Right now, the vacancy rate of the department is ten point eight percent, but they are deleting eighty posts. Also, the ombudsman, when investigating the department's work, they have identified issues in very. In various years, in twenty twenty one, it would be eight of them and after that, in twenty twenty three, twenty four. It would be ten. So we see it does account for a lot of the investigations conducted by the ombudsman. And many issues were identified. I want to ask. How can we improve the management of the department? How can we attract and retain the staff members? I think perhaps the secretary can answer these questions of mine. With high level steering, we have that for rodent control. Measures as well as the arrangements for the tackling of shopfront extension. We can see that in annex two for shopfront extension cases. They have dealt with two thousand three hundred eighty four cases. That is an increase of three hundred and seventy cases. But as other members said, the department does not maintain breakdown for too many areas of its work. How can you practice effective management if you don't even have the relevant analyses? Thank you. Uh two questions. Thank you. Secretary. Thank you. On how to improve our efficiency and effectiveness of our work, we do. Take note of this and we have been constantly reviewing our performance. We are doing something to. Improve the efficiency of our operations as well as the effectiveness. Well, can I? Find out more about the measures specifically? Perhaps the secretary can talk about the specific measures to be implemented or the director can do that. Director, thank you. The F V H D does do a lot. We also review our performance constantly. And our provision of services to the public. We aim to enhance our services whenever we can. We have had advice from the ombudsman and the audit commission. We. Most of them will implement. And we will also try to enhance our services with reference to such feedback. We have also reviewed whether there is room for improvement in various areas. We have actively improved our green burial services, for example. And for public markets, we have also made enhancements. It's the same for public toilets. In the past few years, we have refurbished two hundred fifty public toilets. And in the next few years, we will refurbish another four hundred and thirty public toilets. We have also been trying to improve our regulation of regulation of food. So member, please rest assured, we are constantly reviewing our work in different areas. Well, Chair, can she provide an answer to the my problem, uh my question about the figures? Indeed, it is hard to maintain a breakdown for. A lot of the areas of our work because, for example, we for street sweeping. We have different personnel, we have outsourced workers, we also have. Our in-house hawker control sections working in this. We also have other sections working in the same area. So it is very hard to derive separate figures. We will constantly, however, review our efficiency to see how we can better our services. I note that many members asked about how to better manage public. Markets with resources, so please note members' suggestions or concerns. Thank you. This is the end of the session. Let me say that. The next session will resume at two P M today and meeting adjourned. Thank you.